Just real quick before I call this meeting to. And everyone, especially with what happened today. With that being said, we're going to call this meeting to order. I like to call the meeting of the Hanover Borough Finance and Personnel Committee to order. And we will go from there. I need to turn it over to you first.
Borough Council had an executive session this evening from 6:45 to approximately 7 o'clock PM, involving the following items under Section 708, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of the Sunshine Act. First issue was the Afsmi-White labor contract. Second was the Wilson Avenue land swap agreement. And the third was a public safety issue.
Okay, thank you for that. We will move to number two on the agenda, which is citizens' concerns. Sandy Mau? Oh, you're on the second one. I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay, Mr. Holt, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It is a sad day indeed. I was looking through the agenda, and I do want to point specifically to the item concerning the traffic study at High and Maple. And I saw what was in your packet. And I, my understanding is the traffic study can't be released based on federal statute and Pennsylvania Commonwealth statute. However, I don't know why some of the specifics, such as the volume of traffic that was recorded, the pedestrians, the average speed, and those types of details that would not be proprietary or violation of federal or state law to release to the public. And so I would ask that that information be provided somehow. I think the traffic study is, findings are the typical failed threat. If you think if, as I've heard in the past, well, you know, we'll just take away people's parking spaces along the street. And again, here we go. That's what they do. They penalize the people who are living in the situation. And the guy who, the guys who created the situation with overdeveloping residential houses into apartments, crowded apartments, indeed. They get away scot-free. And here we're dealing with a situation that was created, who knows, 20, 25 years ago, before anybody in this room was even involved. And I just think it just goes, there's got to be a better solution to this than to take away people's parking spaces. And one of those ways you could do, because there is some leeway in this proprietary formula, and that you can create in all way, or what I call a four-way stop there, to address the situation. And we're not going to give that up. We're not going to give it up. And I just don't know how people can be told, taxpayers can be told, they can't have something, as simple as that, to protect them. And I think, once again, it just goes to show how the Third Ward gets dumped on. We've been neglected and dumped on, and underrepresented and underprotected time and time again over the years, that it just becomes, well, that's the way it is around here. That's the way it goes for the Third Ward. That's not right, sir. I also want to point out that, you know, here we go again. We're working with white contract, labor contract provisions on raising salaries for administrative staff. And again, there's been no discussion at any point so far up to this point, before you're going to have your big meeting at the end of this month, about the budget. And you could have used many of an opportunity to educate the public about this. But it just goes to show that you really don't want people to understand. And finally, on this Wilson Avenue project that caused a lot of stir in the Second Ward, the, it just really, it's never really been made clear that the borough, and not the developer, initiated that project, initiated that land swap, and what led to it, the resulting development. And not once did the representatives from the Second Ward, did the mayor, go out in the early stages of 2024, when it became evident that there was going to be some kind of development over there that people weren't going to like, and warn their neighbors what was going to happen, so they had more time to kind of respond and make their views known before the last couple of meetings involved in the process.
Thank you. Community media, if you could help me, if there's anyone online? Nobody's online. Okay. We will be moving on to number five, which is the consent agenda. I'll be looking for a motion. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me, I have a question. Did Scott call in soon?
I thought he was online.
I thought he was doing Zoom once we got here.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if he's on or not.
No one is currently on. It can be a little tedious. Okay, moving on to six on the agenda. 6.01, water supply allocation sustainability policy. I'll be looking for a motion. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Pretty cut and dry. We talked about this a few times already. Okay. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6.02, the land swap agreement for the stream project. I'd be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to-
Oh, A. We're going to do A first.
I'd like to make the motion separating the two for A at this time.
Okay. So we'll be looking for a mo-, thank you for the motion for 6.02A. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye, or aye?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Opposed?
What are we, Canadian?
One opposed.
Yep, motion carries. Now, 6.02B.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table that.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second to table?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on a table vote, or are we good? Okay. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will table 6.02B. Okay, moving on to seven, which is public safety. The High Street parking restrictions and the traffic thing. So do we want to hear from AJ first on this, or will we, can we get a motion first for this?
Motion.
Yeah.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion. Mr. Grimm, would you like to step up and clarify some of this?
Sure. This is something we work together with on the police department, so I'll defer to Lieutenant Bunty to start this off and talk about the process of the study, and we can go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. During a public meeting, August 12, 2025, a citizen concern was cited noting safety concerns at High Street and Maple Avenue due to truck traffic and parked vehicles blocking visibility. Chief Martin and Mr. Grimm were directed to complete a traffic study at the intersection of High Street and Maple Avenue. A traffic study is a very incremental process, step by step, and very much by the book. There are two guiding forms that pertain to this traffic study in particular. One is TE 102, multiway stop control at intersections, engineering and traffic study, and TE 101, speed restrictions, engineering and traffic study. The TE stands for traffic engineering. Those forms, which are the forms used as worksheets during the study, are rooted in regulations from the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is a federal publication, and the PennDOT publication, Publication 212, which is an adoption of those federal rules. And as such, those documents are the regulations or laws that guide that study, and they are adhered to within the study. Areas of concern within the study or analysis would be crash analysis, geometric review, site distance, and speed data. At completion of the study, the only recommendation was to improve site distance to 150 feet on the, what I would call, the eastern side of High Street, south of the intersection of Maple. The multiway stop was not warranted, and no other action was warranted other than the improvement of site distance, based on the outcome of the study.
AJ, you want to add anything?
Sure. So just what we want to point out there, when we talk about these things in public safety, we talk about the traffic study being that official step. So once you make the decision to do a traffic study, we have to follow those guidelines and criteria that the lieutenant just talked about. So these are not something that the borough has made up. As he mentioned, this comes from the federal government through the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and then is adopted by the state of Pennsylvania. At that point, only certified, only people certified through PennDOT can then do this study. So that is the route you take. And what that does is that takes the subjectiveness out of it. So it doesn't matter where it's at, it doesn't matter who it affects, it doesn't matter what day of the week it is. The study is the study. What the recommendation comes out of that is then something that the borough has to follow. If we chose to go a different direction, if we did, say we ignored the study, or we did over and above what the study said, we are then liable for what would happen at that intersection. Here's the good news about that. We can, at any time, go back and revisit this again. If we feel conditions warranted, some kind of change there to look at it again, or any of the intersections. Those of you on public safety know we have done that before. There are intersections that, at one point, did not warrant a four-way stop or some condition that was looked at, and later on did. A perfect example of that is Wilson and Mau. Very early on in my career here, it did not quite warrant that. Later it did. Four-way stop there, works beautifully now at that time. So like I said, this isn't something that's written in stone. We have to do what the study recommends, but it does not stop us from looking at it again later. Any other questions?
Any other questions from anyone in council?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it, gentlemen. We have a motion and a second on the floor for 7.01. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to 8.01, municipal tax exemption policy. This was in our packet, so it's pretty cut and dry. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. 8.02, Hanover Borough Vision Statement. Same thing, it was in our packet.
I have a couple of comments to make prior to voting on this, if I could, please.
Yep, just give me one second.
The governance committee has worked on this vision for some time. And we started at the retreat, if you recall, and we got a lot of great ideas at the retreat, we really did. And then we took those ideas and tried to get those into a responsible statement. And we felt that we needed a little more input. And we asked for more input from the other members of the council. And receiving none, except for the members of the committee, which is Scott and Carol and myself, we then worked on the vision statement. The vision statement is on page 29 of your packet, if you want to take a look at that. The vision statement basically says that we envision a safe, healthy, and quality community where individuals, families, and businesses can thrive. By efficient, high-quality services, we support a clean environment, inclusive recreation, and a vibrant geography downtown for all. So we tried to include the words that Scott and Carol and I come up with. We categorized those words into urgent words, not-so-urgent words, and tried to take the urgent words and put it into a statement. And with the help of, I think, Valerie and Amy, we came out, we wordsmithed this till we came out with that vision statement. So we're asking for that approval tonight. After that, then we'll work on mission and work on values and some other things. But that's what we have as of this time.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will take that as a motion?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion other than what Dr. Rupp talked about? Okay. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Moving on to Finance and Personnel and Administration, 9.01. Approved minimal municipal obligations for the 2026 pension contributions. I think this was explained to us fairly clearly. So I'll be looking for a motion.
Motion.
A second? Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, sign the by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.02, the Afsmi-White labor agreement. We had the information on this also in the packet and a brief discussion. I'll be looking for a motion, please.
Want to approve?
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to say one thing. I want to congratulate Amy and the group that worked on this, because we got some important concessions regarding insurance and regarding wages, and put us on a good, a good trajectory for the next contract and contracts with other unions as well. So I applaud them and thank them.
I agree. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, sign the by by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 9.03, refuge vehicle acquisition. Approved budget amendment in the amount of $286,000 for the purchase of a demo refuge truck. I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Does that grant apply to this?
So if you recall, just like you brought up, we had come to you previously asking to apply for a grant to replace one of our refuge vehicles. Unfortunately, it has volunteered to take itself out of service before we got to the finish line. We've tried to push this thing. It's beyond its life expectancy already. It's to the point of disrepair now to not be able to bring it back into the service. Also, since that time, we've had a catastrophic failure of one of our other trucks. So of the three trucks, we were down to one truck. If you look through your memo there, you'll see we've had to resort to renting a truck to keep trash service from being disrupted. That comes at a price of $8,000 a month. We were very fortunate to come across a rental somewhat in our local area that wasn't really meant to be a rental. It was a demonstrator truck. We had tested this truck last month to see if it would suit our needs as we were looking at that grant for next year. We felt it did. We felt it was well-built. When we got into this predicament, we called to see if this truck was available. Otherwise, we would have to ship in a rental from Ohio or Florida were our choices. So we were, we were kind of in a tough boat there. Here's the good news on this purchase. Certainly, we don't like to purchase things ahead of time or before their scheduled time, as we said. We've pushed this one past its life expectancy already. The two things here, this truck is $100,000 less than buying it brand-new when we did the, excuse me, demonstration on it. It only had 256 hours on it. So we're very confident this vehicle will give us a long life and do what it needs to do to continue our trash service uninterrupted. Unfortunately, that means purchasing this ahead of time. This, this truck is not available for long-term rent. We looked at that option too. In your memo, we looked at several other options. We felt this was the best option to put forward to, again, as I say, keep the trash service going uninterrupted. Our trash service does help supplement our taxes. It's something that, you know, we've worked very hard to create efficiencies in. And unfortunately, we need to invest back into the system here at this point. And that's why I'm asking if we can go ahead and make the resolution to, or approve the purchase of this truck through a budget amendment. The other thing I'd like to point out here, that does allow us, because we are a Co-Stars member, that does allow us to recoup 80% of the rental fees that we are paying back toward the purchase of this truck. So that's, that's a great deal, too.
Well, that was news.
286. So buying brand-new, buying brand-new would be 386, so.
Is there any other questions for AJ?
So that grant, so again, my first question, that, the grant, and I'm just, I mean, I get what you're saying. I know we, I know we have to do this. But so the grant doesn't apply to this because it's not new, or however?
Correct. You can't, you can't do, you can't do the purchase before the grant. So with some of the DEP things, we can. Over the last several years, we've bought very few pieces directly through cash purchase for our trash and recycling system. We've used grants to do this very successfully before. I don't know if we'll be successful next year. That will still stay in the budget, and I'll bring that to you at budget time, and we'll talk, we'll talk through that. But yeah, at this point, we're kind of backed into a corner here to either pay someone else or to, like I said, continue to rent a truck, so. Okay, sure. Any other questions?
Just to be clear, the old one's trashed, right?
Correct.
It was too easy. Really? All right. That being said, we will, all those in favor, sign the by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving down to number 13, which would be additional public comment. Mr. Holt?
Thank you. I will take a little bit of exception to some of the things in discussion, the traffic study, because I think, from what I've heard and talking to some people, there is some latitude in that. And it doesn't have to be so hard-set. And you can, you can, you can address some situations without violating the tenets of the law. I, also, I'm going to bring up again this budget issue. And you could have, you could have used many opportunities to tell the public about some of the things that are going to be in this budget, instead of withholding it from us, as we've seen over and over again. And it just seems like you're going to spring it again on us in December, and that will be the end of it. And done, another tax increase goes in the books, even though you did three, and you promised it wasn't going to happen again. And, and some of those salaries you just approved tonight involved library staff. And again, here we go, a situation where you're maintaining an unsustainable situation in terms of what the borough pays and what other municipalities pay. And that is not fair to us. And there needs to be some way to resolve that with, without penalizing people who want to go to the library and look at books, whatever they do, hang around in some kind of stupor or whatever. And I just don't know. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I have been keeping tally, again in 2025, and a number of public drunkenness, disorderly conducts, things of that nature, unlawful drinking, underage drinking, and drunk-driving citations resting the borough. And you've already surpassed the totals of last year. You've got another two months, a couple of weeks to go yet in this year. You're banging on, getting close to 100 this year round. And so again, it points to the fact that people need to be held accountable. People need to be told that the laws are for the protection of people and that the laws are just a basic framework of a human attempt at setting a framework for decency and respecting people and respecting people's property and their homes. And their, I just, again, you never ask the public if they wanted it rescinded. You never ask the public what they felt about it. And, and when we look at this, it's, it's just, it's just to protect one particular industry, much as, as witnessed, as Main Street Hanover now has a liquor license, special event liquor license. And they got that in May. Nobody ever told us. Nobody told the public, but their business is really essentially promoting alcohol consumption and promoting liquor establishments, and not really promoting downtown, downtown businesses. And more than protecting downtown, as you, and promoting downtown, as you talk about in your vision statement, how about protecting the citizens, the ordinary citizens? And how about protecting the residential neighborhoods that have had to endure some of the fallout of this policy, this misguided and jaded kind of policy? I thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Now, Mrs. Mau, please. Sandy Mau.
My comments also are concerning public safety, especially at the library. First topic is the right-to-know issue. I was practically guaranteed when I decided to go along with the decision to move the right-to-know down to the library. However, my greatest fear has become a reality. I discovered its discrepancy. I pointed it out. We noted it so that it could be printed, and I handed it back in. When I received them the following day, someone thought I was stupid and took a previous year's punch card with the same month and day and placed it in the spot of the missing one. Oh, but I was assured no one else would have any access to those right-to-know items. Since then, there have been multiple intrusions. And even an excuse that I dropped a folder on the floor, coming up to give it to you. I have many more. I could go into more of it, but. Then on the 19th, there was a retirement program at the library, the Bear Center after hours, which I did not know about. I checked the calendar even before I was about to leave. And I went outside, and I saw all these people coming in. And I said, oh, you must be here for the kids' chess match. Oh, no, we're here for a retirement program. Huh? I turned around, go back in, go to enter, and was informed that I could not attend because I had not registered. And I said, how can I register when I didn't know the program was going to be going on? That was a blessing in disguise, in disguise. When I walked around the building, and to make a long story short, I found a certain individual gaining access to the courtyard via a locked iron gate. And someone had just previously tried to get in and couldn't get the gate open. Once inside, that individual went to the door, tried to get it open, couldn't get it open, proceeded to the courtyard, to the garden, and came back and was able to open the door. the door. So a couple of things here. Pass keys. I don't know who has them. There evidently a lot of them. And the historical society, we'll just call it disrespect. So when I went to document her sinning at a computer that automatically closes 15 minutes before the library closes, and she gets on and she starts typing away. So when I go to document it, she comes out the door and she says, Sandy, I can have you arrested for taking my picture without my permission. And I said, what about all the times you have taken pictures of me without my permission? Oh, I didn't do that. I said, no, but your associates did. That put an end to the conversation. Oh, no, one more thing. I could bring the police here. And I said, well, by all means, please bring Chief Martin.
Okay. If you can start wrapping it up then, please?
There are a couple of them, and they deal, so bear with me. I usually agree with you. Tuesday, we had one of the drug dealers arrive and circle the rear area for a half an hour without being asked what he was there to do. Only one time did he remove a book from a shelf and immediately put it back on. So when I asked about why no one had asked him what he was doing, I was told, we can't do anything until we catch him doing something.
Okay, if you can kind of come to a conclusion, I'd appreciate it.
So Saturday, what happened down in the Bear Center with water gushing out? The Hispanic English class was working down in the Bear Center, and evidently when they arrived, they found wetness. But during their class, they found, this lady came up and said, there's water gushing out now. So I have no idea what happened, other than the plumbers came and could not find the issue. It took all afternoon.
Thank you, Mrs. Mau. I don't mean to cut you off, but I need you to be precise with your, with your statements because you're at six minutes at this current time.
Oh, I know. But other people have gone way over six.
Not when I run a meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? That one doesn't count. Okay, real quick, before we call for an adjournment, please plan to exit the building within 15 minutes following the adjournment, so staff may secure the building and depart for the evening. Also, Council members, please confirm your attendance at Tuesday, 9:23's Budget Workshop, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We need to have a quorum for that. Now, I'll be looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those approved?
I just wanted to remind everybody to, this Saturday, the Hanover Chamber is having their Snack Town Fall Fest from 1:00 to 6:00 out at Mau Field. There will be food trucks, craft vendors, games, and three bands. So, and it looks like it's going to be a beautiful day, so come on out. It is a free event to the community.